Good evening. This time I'm calling the city council meeting for the month of July to order. At this time, we will ask Reverend Mr. Monroe from Cavalry Baptist Church to come forth and give us the invocation. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I want to thank all of you for your service to our community and our town. If I was a younger man, I might go into politics myself. But we're always looking for people to support us and help us. It's good to see some familiar faces here tonight. Notwithstanding, Mr. Martin up there, who I did some time with back years ago and before I got saved. I talked a little bit about it a while ago. But anyway, that's another story. So let us bow our heads. Father, we just come today expressing our love for you. God, we thank you for the blessings of life that we do not rightly deserve. Lord, you look down upon us and even in our sinful condition, and you cause good things to happen in our life. And so we're so thankful for that. God, I thank you for all these leaders of our city tonight as they've come together and given their time for the citizens in this town and even in our county. I pray, God, that you will give them wisdom to lead in the direction that they should lead, that it would be beneficial to all that they serve. Father, as we come before you tonight to ask forgiveness in all the areas of our life where we failed you, we pray, God, you'll draw us closer to you in the days ahead that we might be worthy to be called your children. We thank you especially, Lord, for your son, Jesus, as he came into the world, he took our sins, and he nailed them to a cross that we might have eternal life. And it's in his name that we lift our prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Council, you have before you at this time for the agenda for tonight's meeting. What are your wishes at this time?
I'm hoping to be adopted.
Accepted.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Next item of business is approval of the minutes from the June 14 meeting. You should have a copy of those. What are your wishes on those?
I make a motion we accept it.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. At this time, we move along to item number five, which is comments from attendees for matters other than what's on the agenda for tonight. And we would ask Mr. Chris McDonald, president of Richmond County Disc Golf Group, to make his presentation. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you for having me today. Sorry. Okay. Let's have a quick presentation for y'all. So I am the president of Richmond County Disc Golf Group. We are a fairly new nonprofit 501(c) in the county of Richmond County. We do reside mainly at Hinson Lake Disc Golf Course because that is currently our only 18-hole disc golf course that we have in the county. There is other disc golf courses within 30 minutes in Laurinburg and Southern Pines area. And one of the next goals I want to do is I want to branch out within the county, help grow our group a little more than what we have. As of yesterday, we are at 70 paid members, which is only just short of the areas like Charlotte and Raleigh. So we do have a fairly large group for the small county that we do live in. And I think City Lake would be the perfect opportunity, perfect place for there to be a disc golf course added to this area. City Lake, I was unsure about how much land there was out there, but people have told me before about how this would be a good spot for it. And my profession is in the GIS field, so I was able to look up some areas to see how much parcel, how much acreage was owned. And I did find that there was just over 25 acres of land that is untapped in that area over by the American Legion at City Lake on the other side of the baseball fields, just to the southeast of Boyd Lake Road. My goal with this is to help build tourism. Disc golf has been one of the big booms ever since COVID started. We started with COVID. We went with that. We started with a very small group, and we gradually built on that. Disc golf tournaments happen multiple times a week, multiple times in a weekend. Right now, we're at three or four tournaments a year that we hold at Hinson Lake. We build over 40 players, up to 72 players for each tournament that we have, and that ranges from either local players or across the whole entire state. I did create a rendering, so I'm sorry that it is turned the other way, but Matthew may be able to turn it for me. This utilizes pretty much the entire area. So I've talked with Matthew before, and we kind of seem to be on the same page, that if we're going to go with a disc golf course, I want to go the full distance. I want to create a championship level course that not only the local recreational players can play, but those that maybe of the pro level from the bigger cities that can come and play tournaments as well. This utilizes the entire space to the northeast and to the southwest, which encompasses the lake and around the fields as well. This would be, as I said, a championship level course so pros could play it, and it would be a challenge for all levels of play. If you go to the next slide, please. So this is just a projected price rundown of exactly what it would be. So yes, those numbers are rather large numbers. It is a $30,000 to $40,000 project that would come of it, but I would not be asking the city to try to fund this. This is not feasible for a small municipality to be able to do that. This would hopefully come from private funds or come from fundraising that we do through tournaments or other membership funds that we would do on the side to help project these costs. This does cover disc golf baskets, which are pretty much one of the high expenditures. Our tee pads, which would be concrete, which is the preferred teapad for most anybody because in any condition, you know, if it's wet or dry, you wouldn't have to slip. Definitely wouldn't want to have benches and trash cans because if we were going to expand into this area, we want to make sure that people are comfortable and also at the same time be able to keep the place clean. If we're going to come in somewhere, I don't want to go in and make something more dirty than what it already was. So trash cans are definitely a big thing. Signage is also another big thing because we want to make sure that people can get around and people understand that if they're not used to disc golf, or maybe they're there for a baseball tournament or baseball games, if they want to check this course out at a later time, they understand the signage and can read about the course at a future time. And also, the miscellaneous costs would be more like clearing, also adding mulch, rocks, aesthetics to the course to make it beautiful. If I want to put a course in, we just don't want to plot baskets, tee pads, and benches into a location. We want to make sure that when somebody comes in, they say, all right, I want to come back to this course, or locals come to this course to walk around just to be able to see something new. Let me go to the next slide, please. And this is just the kind of the rundown. So the rest of this presentation kind of gives you a rundown of ideas of what I think would be good for this area. So these are the tee pads along with dimensions, the benches and trash cans. So for benches and trash cans, I want to have them every certain amount of holes to make sure that the trash can be cleaned up or people can have their rest on the benches. Teapad signs, so this is just an example that is provided by a local company, or by a company that is popular in the United States called Dynamic Disc. It gives a good rundown of what the hole is, how far it is, and gives a good map of the hole in general so that players have an understanding of where they're throwing. And then on top of that, this is what a projected course map would be. So this would kind of sit adjacent to the parking lot or adjacent to hole one. So people would be able to see, okay, this is where the tee pads would be, this is where the holes would go, where the lake is, kind of give a good idea of how the course would play prior to them actually showing up or actually going to try to play the course. And then, as I said, on top of the miscellaneous items, I would like to try to make sure that there's as much beautification around this course as there would be. You know, this course, if it were to be built, would be, or it would be beside this beautiful lake that needs to be tapped into because, you know, you go out there and you want to make sure that if you have something that's beautiful in the city, if you're going to add something to it, you need to make sure that everything around it at least goes with it or makes it more beautiful in the end. And so that would end up being maybe rocks around the tee pads, flowers, new shrubbery, or mulch around the baskets. And one of the big things with disc golf is trying to decrease erosion. So this can also be a bad thing. There's much elevation at this location. So the big thing would try to be to mitigate erosion for this area, especially since there's going to be much, if there would be any runoff, it would go in the lakes. And I don't want to disturb anything if there is any as well. But yes, this is my quick rundown of my proposal to hopefully build a disc golf course in the future at City Lake. And if there's any questions, then please let me know.
I got one point right now you need to coordinate with Ms. Dillman sitting right behind you because she's fixing to make a presentation.
Okay.
So y'all will need to coordinate.
Yes, sir.
How will this interfere with what we have down there now by the, and I see you programmed there, outlined the, how would that interfere? Are you going north of the ballpark or are you coming south what we already got, the walking trail?
So yes, sir. The main part would go north of the ballpark. That way, it uses the wooded area that's to the north of that. So as of now, I don't believe there's anything north of the ballparks at all. The hope would be to try to make sure that the disc golf course at least plays somewhere around the ballpark so it doesn't interfere with any of the already parking areas that are there. It wouldn't affect any buildings and try to be at least far enough away so that if somebody is throwing a disc, they're not throwing it into a window or onto a roof or something like that. So the hope would be to try to keep the disc golf course to where people don't have to walk too far, but also keep it to where it's close enough to the adjacent land that if people want to use one side of things, they can use them both at the same time.
I see. And it doesn't interfere with the walking trail we've gotten down?
Some of the holes would go within the walking trail, but there's only two, the holes 15, 16, 17, and 18 would be the only holes that would interfere or be adjacent to the walking trail that is currently in place now.
Well, and I wonder about the foundation. Is that land suitable to put something like this over there?
I am unsure. I don't have enough of the data to look over there, and it's really thick.
It's really boggy, and I walk that trail a lot, and I go down there and walk around. But that's really hard land to keep up.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know how much, if you'd put a pad down there next to that lake, it looks to me like it'd take a lot of maintenance unless it's really well constructed.
Okay, and that would definitely have to be some of the process of going through and looking at the construction, the design phase of things to seeing, is the land actually suitable to do this?
Yes.
But it's more of, you know, proposal because if, you know, if I don't have your blessing, then there's no point in even trying to like move forward with the design process. So that's the, the hope is to try to at least have the understanding for everybody to know that we're going to try to get this design phase and see what is suitable and what's not. Because I've been down there, like you said, it is very marshy.
So yes, it is very marshy. And would there be a fee for people to play this disc golf?
No, sir. This is free to play.
Free to the public?
Yes, sir. That's how most disc golf courses are. That's how Hinson Lake is. It's free to the public. It gives people the opportunity to do something that you obviously have to pay for the disc, but it gives you something to do outside, and you don't have to worry about paying too much for it to play.
I see.
What do your dotted lines represent?
Yes, sir. Those are just the connecting pass. So the ending, the white squares are where the tee pads would be, and then the ending of the red line is just where the basket would be in general. And so those are just projected.
I hope it'll work because it looks like good use for that land that we've not had any use for.
None.
Matt, city workers would maintain this?
Yeah, I think that the, you know, disc golf course is what we'd call like a passive recreational use. There's not a lot, I mean, there is some infrastructure, but very minimal. We would have to look at, again, as Chris mentioned, in the exploratory phase, you know, what are the maintenance needs? What sites are suitable? Is the plan actionable? And certainly part of that would be what's the maintenance upkeep? And I know from the group that's out there now, I know y'all have a lot of participation, and they participate in the cleanup as well. And so it would certainly be a partnership, but the city would be in the primary role of maintaining the property.
So as of right now, just at Hinson Lake, the city of Rockingham does help with fallen trees, so they do get those out of the way. But for the most part, if we walk and we see down branches or any trash, we try to pick those up and put them in the trash or take the limbs and move them off as we see fit. That way, it's less work on the city, and they mow the grass when they have the opportunity to do so. And so we push forward and have a good connection that way.
Well, would it be possible, if you couldn't have an 18-hole disc golf course, could you minimize it to nine-hole?
Yes, sir. There is a possibility for a nine-hole course, yes.
And the thing I have about it is what, you said there'd be three pads there next to the city lake, and then the city would have to be involved in it, and we have, our workers have a load now.
Yes, sir.
And I would just want if you could go farther north and leave the city property off of it, I mean, and go back higher up if it isn't too marshy.
Gotcha.
And make it a nine-hole course to start with.
Yeah, and one of the things with the way the parcel is or the adjacent land is, a lot of the adjacent land is privately owned land. So the Hamlet city, I guess the Hamlet land runs out about where hole seven and six are. I think that's the holes that are up there.
Yeah.
Any north of that is all private land, so to be, you know, obviously you don't want to tap anybody's private land.
You don't have much luck on that.
Any further south, you're getting into, it's either walking too far or you're getting to more marshy areas. So that's just, but yeah, nine-hole course would be, is an option if the land ends up being a little too marshy. Because definitely around the, I guess, the southeastern part, hole 12, bottom of hole 14, that is a, based off GIS and elevation, it looks fine, but you never know, especially if it rains a lot.
If it didn't work, it'd be a plus for us.
I know.
I mean, it's marshed, more, some places it's swampy.
Oh, yeah.
Why don't you take a look at it then and bring us a plan back and tell us what the condition of the land is and that sort of thing?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say, thanks for the great presentation.
Oh, you're very welcome.
It's wonderful. Yeah, very seldom do people want to take part in the community and do things.
Yeah.
We need these things.
I walk a lot out of Hinson Lake and see everybody out there with the disc golf, and it doesn't approach on the trail. I mean, they use the trail, but they're very mindful of people that are walking. And I've personally seen the people out there playing golf, picking up stuff and things like that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a very tight-knit community, it seems like. But from our standpoint, from my standpoint here, I really appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
I appreciate your effort and your energy to try to do something in a positive manner for the community, the town, and everybody else to enjoy.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You might want to stick around and hear Ms. Dillman's presentation.
Of course, yes, I would love to.
If you have got one to come up.
Yeah, this is great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's exciting. I'm excited about that. I'd love to see.
Ms. Dillman, you're next.
Yes, sir. Mr. Egs is on our committee also.
Okay. Come on up, Ms. Egs.
Hi, I'm Pam Dillman. Nice to see y'all. Thank you, Hamlet City Council, for letting us come today. We have started a 501(c) for the Hamlet City Lake, and we took the project that y'all put forward about three years ago, and we're going to help you meet your $3.5 million. We're going to do some projects starting very soon here in Hamlet. And Louis Egs is our secretary of trade. He's going to tell you about the first one, and then I'll tell you about some other things that we're going to plan to do.
Okay. Ms. Egs?
I don't need that microphone, I don't think.
Yeah, if you would, please.
The Axtegrun Stephanie in your town here, she's going to host a pie eating contest. And...
You know our weakness.
Well, one thing we need from you guys is, we need some contestants. And we thought it'd be, we thought it'd be really nice to have upper echelon Hamlet city officials competing in the...
You'd probably make more money, you'd probably make more money if you had a Dunkin' booth.
A pie-throwing contest, not an eating contest.
Well, that was a suggestion. Stephanie is supposed to be getting a flyer to us. It's going to, it's going to be July 30th, and it should be mid-afternoon, 2:00 to 3:00 o'clock. We don't know that for sure. There's going to be people donating pies, and like I said, the biggest need we need now is contestants. And if you don't want to be a contestant, you know anyone in town, you might can go to us to be one. We could really use that. But all the profits from these little, these projects we've got coming up, we're donating all the money for everything. There's going to be, you know, the Seaboard Festival, we're going to, we're going to have a booth selling food.
Yes, we will, and we'll have chicken and dumplings and Brundrick stew that whole day. Along with that, I wanted to bring up, right after the pie eating contest, and we really appreciate Stephanie stepping up. I want you to know that we met with your Chamber Group, your merchants. We have an awesome group of people here in Hamlet, North Carolina. We've always had an awesome group. But we met with them, and they opened their arms wholeheartedly and are a big part of helping us keep the lake and get things going here. I think the idea that you're seeing tonight is a step forward for Hamlet. Rockingham already has one, but if we have the feasibility to do it there, I think that would should be something really good. The more people we have coming in, the more money is being spent in our community. On September 24th, we're going to have the largest ghost walk that has ever been done in Richmond County. I hope that some of you will sign up. I do have a few now, I already have, that'll be in this room. Some have already been in our ghost walks. But I do have, our police chief and our lieutenant are going to help us out. Thank you very much. And we will have quite a few openings. I still have about 50 more slots to fill. And I can write a story very easily, but some of the stories that you saw were written in the little letter that I, that y'all read. And we're going to have the OK Corral, and that's where our, Mr. Brown will help us out. He's going to be wide up. And the lieutenant back here is going to be Doc Holliday. And we also have some other openings, too. We will have the train wreck of 1901. We'll have the OK Corral, which I already told you about. And there will be World War II. We have the USO building that was used during World War II here in Hamlet, and we'll have a wonderful setup for that. And underneath there, we'll also have a cowboy saloon there. Also, we will have a bank robbery. We have the cars from 1923 that will be in the ghost walk that you'll be seeing. We also have some other vehicles that you will enjoy. With 125 people in the cast, I'm hoping that some of y'all will sign up tonight. And if you don't want to say anything, we're having openings for guides and other stand-ins. So you don't have to talk, just be there for us. The next thing that we're going to be doing in February, we will have a dinner at the depot, but we'll have a murder mystery weekend. We'll have two nights. We'll have a Friday night and a Saturday night. And Mr. Egs is a fantastic cook. He's going to do the meal. We're having prime rib that night. So that's something to look forward to. And then again, in April, we're going to have a candlelight service around the city lake to honor the folks that passed in the Imperial Foods fire and COVID and other people. And we'll have live music. And at this time, your merchants were telling us they wanted to put the food trucks there, and we're going to open it up for arts, too, that evening. I'm hoping that you'll be there or be a part of some of this, and thank you so much for Hamlet. You know I love it. This is where I grew up, and I want our little city lake to get better and better. And I think the disc golf would be wonderful, but the project that we're talking about, we'll have a boardwalk, paddleboating, kayaking, splash park, all the things that we need for our community. Thank you so much for letting us come tonight, and I look forward to your helping us with this project. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I have a question, Pam.
Yes, sir.
What about the saloon? Is it not going to be hooligan saloon?
It is. It is hooligans, and it was known as...
What's your first name again?
Louis.
It was known as Louis's Place. Y'all probably didn't know that. It was known as Louis's Place and hooligans, and it's right, it was right there where the depot is. Yes, we will have hooligans.
I hope to have a license.
I hope so, too. But I mean, we have so many, we have about 20-something stories. It'll take, we'll start about 9:00. And then afterwards, of course, we'll have a party afterwards at the depot for everyone that's been a part of it. Thank you so very much. I'm excited, and I hope you guys are, too.
Boy, that sounds very exciting. Thank you for a great time.
Do you have this on Facebook or anything where people can actually see what your plan is for the...
Yes, we're going to put it on Facebook. We're attending the Rotary Club Monday, and the Chamber is going to help us out, and also the Richmond Theater. So we have a grand bunch of people, not just Hamlet folks. We have so many that are helping us with this. And isn't that wonderful?
Yes, it is. And I nominate, and I volunteer, Maury Stewart myself, and we'll team up and get something.
Well, we...
Pam knows that.
Yeah, I've got your name and number, so thank y'all so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
And like I said, there's nothing better than Hamlet, and I'm looking forward to moving back here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pam.
Keep us posted.
Always good to see you, too. Good to have you with us tonight. Ms. Egs, thank you. Does anyone else got anything they'd like to bring before the board tonight? If not, we will close the comments to council, and we'll move along to new business. Item number six, contract Richmond County building inspections. We've been doing this for years that they've been doing, and we have to redo this every year. What are your wishes on it, council?
Move that we proceed with the contract?
I second it.
Motion and a second. Any further comment? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Item number seven is reappointment of the Hamlet Planning Board. Mr. David Quick, term on planning board expires August 14th. He served as an alternate from 2001 to 2018 when he was appointed as a regular member. Mr. Quick has agreed to remain on the board. There are no other applications that have been received. Council, what are your wishes on this?
Make a motion. Point.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. Item number eight, council, you have before you at this time the approval of tax releases for the, this month here somewhere. Okay, it's all, it's a total of the amount of $303.11, and it's all on tax refunds on vehicles, vehicles sold, area where they live, vehicles sold, area where they live. What are your wishes on the...
Maybe that we accept.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Oppose likewise. All right, this time we'll move along, city manager's report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Before I go into my report, I'd like to introduce Chief Brown. He has a brief introduction for a new member of our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Council. I have the honor of introducing a new member of the police department. I normally don't introduce officers, but this is the major. He'd be the second commander in the department. It's Mr. Hudson Chitwood. He is a graduate UNC Pembroke. He's a very accomplished criminal investigator and police officer, and I can tell you, he's one of the smartest people I've ever met, and he is going to do this city a fantastic service. He's already hit the ground running. He, our city application, you know, we're trying to attract new staff, younger officers. He, in one day, a day and a half, has developed a survey where the, where people can fill out the city application over their phone, like texting, which is pretty fantastic, already in a day. And he's developed a code enforcement link on, that's going to be posted on our website where any citizen can get on there, send, fill out the little links, and then do it Uh, send, fill out the little links, and then do it anonymously if they choose. And then that information is sent to our code enforcement officer, Ms. Hurt, uh, who's now sworn in. She's a police officer. And, uh, it's gonna expedite our procedures, and all the information will be transferred over into the thing that they use, right? You know what I'm talking about, the thing, right? And it's gonna be transferred over there, and that way we can track it and give you guys updates at meetings, post it, come up with nice maps. Uh, it's fantastic. Uh, he's gonna do a fantastic job. I have nothing but the most confidence in him. Uh, and I'll introduce, uh, Mr. Hudson Chitwood. His dress is better than me.
Well, it's an honor. I really appreciate the opportunity to, um, show what I can do to all of you and to improve this community. I, I fell in love with Hamlet, um, back when, uh, Mr. McQueen was my professor in college. And, uh, I'm originally from Colorado. I think some of you have seen the crime analytics that I generate every month. So I've been doing the criminal analysis for a year here, so I'm trying to hit the ground running with what I know. And it's been a huge opportunity that Chief Brown's been willing to take me under his wing and teach me all the things that I don't know. So I'm obviously very young, but I will make you proud. And I'll, if you have a project for me, I'm happy to hear it, and we can go forward. So, thank you very much.
Glad to have you.
Glad to have you. Welcome to Hamlet, and thank you.
I appreciate it.
Well, and I will say that we interviewed folks from all across North Carolina and New Jersey. Uh, and he was overwhelmingly the top choice. Uh, we interviewed local folks. Uh, we interviewed folks, uh, from Raleigh PD, a master detective. Uh, Mr. Chitwood was the board's unanimous, uh, highest choice, so he's earned it. He's dealt some really good competition.
I hope he'll stay in there.
I hope he'll stay with us.
At least till I retire.
Thank you for, thank you for your effort, Dennis.
There are great things going on with our police department in Hamlet.
Yeah.
It's coming up in the world. It's, uh, things are just going, right now, everything's going wonderful, and we really appreciate that, and, uh...
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, and welcome aboard. Um, a few quick notes, um, to conclude my report. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out to, um, enjoy the fireworks on July 4th. That was, uh, such a great sight to see everyone gathered together. It was just very, very nice and really excited about the turnout there. Um, uh, July 22nd, we'll have food trucks down at the depot. Uh, the Hamlet Senior Center is organizing a few trips I'd like to, uh, promote a little bit. Uh, there's two seats left on a trip to Italy in October, which is a great trip that's been delayed a few times. But, uh, they're, they're actually ready to make that trip happen. And they just announced their first trip in 2023, which will be going to Miami, Fort Lauderdale, and Key West. And you can sign up for those at the Hamlet Senior Center. We're also, uh, registering currently for soccer. Uh, registration closes on, uh, July 29th. You can do that here at City Hall. And, uh, finally, we're looking ahead a little bit towards the fall already. It'll be here before you know it. And we're accepting, uh, or the Seaboard Festival Committee is accepting, uh, applications to be a vendor at the Seaboard Festival, which is always a great event here in Hamlet. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Anyone got questions for the manager? Okay. In that case, we'll move along to item number 10 for our comments of council. Mr. Martin?
Uh, nothing other than, I hope everybody will come out and support the American Legion baseball team in their, uh, upcoming runoff, uh, playoff season coming up, and it'll start Thursday, I think, here. And, uh, it'll be the first, their first, uh, game in the, in the, in the, I guess, the divisional playoffs. I hope, uh, everybody will come out and support it. Other than that, um, I agree with the city manager. We had a great turnout at the Fourth of July. And I hope we can, I hope we can make it even bigger and better next year. But that's, that's next year, but we'll, we'll talk about it later. Other than that, I think that's about all I have. That's about all I can say anyway I've got there.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, thank Pam Dillman and Chris McDonald for coming out and showing, giving a great, both of you gave great presentations. And thank you for your interest in Hamlet. It's greatly appreciated. Uh, and I just hope everyone, I'd like to see more attendance of, of our, uh, residents here, of Hamlet. We need more participation at these council meetings. I wish they would come out and express that this is the place to start and see what we can do. I appreciate the work that the city manager and the city, all the city employees and the mayor are doing. And everybody stay cool and hydrated. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Um, Mr. Chris McDonald, thank you. Um, born and raised in Hamlet. Things like that make me so excited. Uh, also, you know, you don't seem to have a, um, you know, profitable gain in this and not even asking so much. And, um, of course, I love private donations, and so all that makes me happy. Ms. Dillman, I always appreciate your excitement about Hamlet. So you guys, whatever I can do or help out, always. Um, Senior Citizens Center, thanking them. They're always doing big things. I see they got a new trip to Miami and Key West and somewhere else.
And you can't go.
And I can't go.
You're not old enough.
I am always excited. They, the seniors are, are my favorites, and I always, always, uh, like to see them doing great things. Chief, thank you for this new hire. Uh, he was taught well, uh, professor here. Uh, I've seen his resume, and I followed him. Um, so please, and, and, you know, even in the climate that we're in, I know he's a great guy. He's a whiz and all the things he's done so far. But even in our climate and something as small as making sure that our citizens are treated fairly and, um, everything is equitable across the board and, um, you know, that everybody's treated fairly. I want even something as small as that to be still considered, um, when we're doing our hires and when we, we are looking at people like that. But I have no doubt that he will be a tremendous, and like you said, I hope he'll be around since retirement time. Um, and I think that's basically it. Uh, John Crowtrain, I started playing the saxophone because of him many, many, many years ago. He passed away July 17th, um, 1967, which is about three or four days from now. So I just want us to always remember the life and legacy of Mr. John Crowtrain, born and raised. Uh, well, not completely raised, but born here in Hamlet, North Carolina. Always thanking my colleagues here, and great to see the faces. COVID is, you know, with us post-COVID, we're seeing many more people come out to the meetings, so please continue to come out to the meetings. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Ms. Covington?
Um, well, first of all, I want to say that I had a wonderful time at the fireworks. Bill and I had the pleasure of judging the art contest, the chalk contest. And it was probably one of the hardest things I ever had to do. We had to come up with some parameters in our head because we had some wonderful work down there. And, um, it, it just went in a thousand different directions, a lot of talent. But we tried to, to narrow the recipients. We only had three medals. Next year, we're gonna have a lot more medals, so it won't be so hard. But, um, we tried, tried to narrow the recipients to the kids because they were the ones who participated and the ones who made an effort to have some kind of patriotic July the Fourth theme. So that was a lot of fun. The fireworks were great. Um, some people took issue with the trains, but I think that's Hamlet. You know, that's part of it, and there's nothing more all-American than a train. Um, Pam, I want to say I'm really excited about all that you have put, if there was planned. If there was ever a can-do person, you're it. And you love a ghost walk. You love a ghost walk, and I can promise that's gonna be fun for anybody that's fortunate enough to be involved. We have a wedding that weekend in Statesville. Can you move it? So, um, also, I think we need to say kudos to our recreation department and all that they've done this summer. I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Maurice, but I did have some parents who were involved in another recreation program this summer tell me they would never play anywhere else but Hamlet again. They said Maurice runs the absolute best recreation program they've ever seen. He's personally involved with every child. He makes it a point to say something personal to every child at the end of the game and compliment them on their performance and their win or console them in their loss. So I think we've got a real kind of underrated jewel in that program, and I hope that's something that we can continue to grow in a lot of different ways. And, um, let's see if there's anything else I jotted down here. Recreation fireworks. And Chip, I think the golf, disc golf course is really a great idea. We've, I play a lot of softball out of town, and almost every recreational area that has the softball fields devoted to it has a disc golf area. And a lot of times, it walks around the softball fields or whatever, but there's a lot of people that get involved in that. And I think, you know, it offers a form of recreation to people that don't wanna play golf, don't wanna play baseball, don't wanna do anything else. It's a little more passive, but it's a lot of fun, and I appreciate you bringing that opportunity to us. And if there's anything I can do, I obviously can't speak for the city, but if there's anything I can do to, to help bring it to fruition in some capacity, please, please don't hesitate to, to call on me. And I think that's all.
Thank you. Mr. McQueen?
Um, just a few things. So, um, the Legion baseball that's been going on has been really, um, it's been a really nice time. Going out there and, and, and seeing some people coming out and sitting around, and people from Rockingham, people from all walks of life, just enjoying the town, the community, um, and that field. The field looks better than this looked in a long time.
Long time.
Um, and maybe, you know, maybe at some point, we can keep doing little things up there, um, to keep it like that. Um, fireworks were, were great, too. Um, really enjoyed that, and I, I saw some of the same stuff about people complaining about the trains, and that was, some of that was some of the most ludicrous stuff I'd ever seen. I'm just, I, I, it, that's all I'm gonna say about it, because it was, it was ludicrous. Um, somebody called me the other day and said that they noticed some people hanging around James Building and they thought somebody might be staying in it. Can you check on that, just to, to see? Um, make sure nobody's there that's not supposed to be there.
Building down here.
Right.
I saw the door open, Doug.
Uh, Tug Brown's been working in there the last couple of days.
Yeah, some, some, yeah, somebody said like, um, at night, somebody went in, and they saw him going in or something. But just, if you'd have somebody, just check that out, because, um, and check on that. Uh, so I guess it's been a couple of years ago, a guy came with some grandiose ideas about the old Carroll Company out on Ballardary Road, um, about how it was gonna be, uh, you know, this, it was gonna be just beautiful and kept, kept up. And we had some concerns about how it had been kept up. It's horrible. Grass needs to be cut. They threw couches and furniture out on one side. Um, somebody may need to contact them. I mean, it's, for the people that live on that side over there and the people that ride by, it is absolutely atrocious. Um...
The ones that live on the east side of that 177, and it is bad.
Yeah.
On the Ballardary Road.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it's like they opened the door and just threw old couches and stuff out. It's, it's horrible. Um, and I know we only do like complaint based, but I'm just considered out of complaint, I guess. Um, uh, the AMP over there, we need to do something with that grass. I mean, it, it looks, it looks atrocious. I mean, we got folks coming in wanting to clean up parts of town and do things for the town and, and things like that. And we got to, we got to step it up a little bit, especially over there on that. Um, I know we busy and it's a tough time, and grass gets out of control, but, um, we could check on that. Uh, for the folks that came, um, great ideas. If, if anybody can do it, Ms. Dillman can do it. Um, I, I can, you are a wonderful asset to start that, and I really appreciate it. Um, Chris, also, the, uh, you know, I don't understand all the ins and outs of the disc golf stuff. Um, but I do know there's a lot of people that utilize that place at, at, uh, Hinson Lake. Um, and I think that is a excellent, excellent proposal. And if there's anything that we can do, I mean, come to us and ask us if we can do some in-kind stuff. You know, don't, don't just assume we're not. Um, and, and let's see what we can do with that. We've got equipment and things like that, and got a manager that can help facilitate that. Um, the last thing I'm gonna say, this is probably one of the happiest days that I've set up here with the hire that the chief did. That guy, he said he's probably the smartest person he's ever met. I'll triple that. Hudson is a, it doesn't have anything to do with that. He, he is a wonderful asset to this department, this town, and I am so happy that he agreed to come here. And, you know, there's no doubt he just excelled in the whole process, but I can't tell you how happy I am for that. And I've expressed that to the chief, too, but I wanted to just say that publicly. Um, I think that's all I've got. And if you could just get back with me on that, where I can let that person know.
The, I tell you what, by the time it gets down to me, everything's been said. I'm, I'm up here kinda... I, my wife and I both thoroughly enjoyed the Fourth of July celebration, uh, and talking to Michelle. Next year, we're gonna try to have some more eating establishments there, um, which that'll be a help. But, uh, and like, uh, Ms. Covington was saying, we're gonna have different age groups for the, uh, sidewalk chalk, because there was a lot of nice stuff done down there, done by adults, and there's some done, some done by kids that you wouldn't have thought they'd have been old enough to do that good. But I, I tell you what, they're, they're growing up in a hurry. Um, we appreciate the Dillmans, of course, and Chris. We appreciate what you all are doing. Along those same lines, every now and then, somebody will take that lighter and they'll light a spark about the Opera House. And, uh, I, again, and when we're talking about stuff like this, I'd still need to see somebody come along and, uh, really take hold of it. I, the fact is, the night of the Fourth of July, I had two people approach me about it. But what's gonna happen down the road is we're gonna end up with another hole in the wall down there because it's just gonna deteriorate. But that is something that I'd like to keep on people's minds. It's, it, it's a historic place. There's only, there's only one other one like it, it's in Wilmington. Uh, but it does have a lot of potential, a lot of potential for use. But, you know, again, it's a money issue, and gotta put somebody after it. Um, again, uh, let's mention the Seaboard again. If you want to go to the Seaboard, be part of the Seaboard, you need to contact them and get signed up now so they can get everything lined up. Uh, we appreciate the attorney who's serving with us tonight. Our regular attorney is at Philmont Scout Camp, and, uh, he should be back, probably not ready to go back to work when he gets back. But we do appreciate having you here tonight. Thank you so much. And, uh, that'd be all I will have. And at this time, I go to item number 12 and ask for a motion to go into closed session for General Statute 143, 318, point 11A6 for personnel issue.
Make a motion, we'll go closed session.
Motion?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. All right, we stand in closed session.